Oh my gosh.
And then I texted them all that she was home, so my phone's been blowing up. Can we call her? Can we call her? Yeah, you better call her now.
Before she falls asleep.
Or when she crashes the burn.
Right.
Now, she's gonna, I mean, they didn't even, I didn't even go into recovery until she was coherent.
Oh, thank you.
So. And then the nurse, it was taken care of.
Yeah, no, I've got tea, I'm good.
Had breast cancer. The nurse said was taking care of her and had breast cancer.
Okay.
But she got a tattoo right here. Oh, this is still giving her any ideas?
Yeah, you got one local, man, you can.
I know. You know.
I see, good.
I wanted to save a little time during the meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Did you approve those?
Yeah, we're good with this one.
The only thing, she told me.
We have some concerns.
We can't make any decisions on this one.
Good to go on this one.
Okay.
So I just got a case.
Anything? I kinda wanted to eliminate all twenty-five dollars.
We're not getting a special meeting at all.
It or not, that's what we only have, like, we can't negotiate on it.
No, we have to.
Hundred percent go to that side. Just approved, you're approved on that.
No, there's no negotiation either.
Not a no, it's just.
Yeah, there's no motion.
All right.
Either way, no, you can say, I don't even know, I had.
I think we have to accept it for tonight.
Come on, buddy.
But there's no change in it.
No.
So, all I'm gonna do is ask her, I'm gonna put no witnesses, just shit's a get.
Well, we, well, we, we can't though, we don't have, we have a plan.
You guys, oh, there's no vote.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
We can't post votes.
No, I'm not gonna do any of that.
Yeah, actually, there's nothing.
Right.
No, there's nothing there.
That's why I was gonna call you today to do that very thing, so.
Yeah, so they're just presenting what they did and that's what we get.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, how are you?
You good?
The only, yeah.
Okay.
The only complaint I had was why, why screw around with twenty-five dollars an hour for three minutes? Just give us per meeting.
Yeah, in just a minute.
You know.
So, in two years, we'll deal with it again.
Oh, is that how often you do it?
Yeah, it's every two years on the odd year.
Okay.
You good?
Maybe we just make a comment, that way we can talk about the issue.
You good? Okay.
We don't have to motion on it tonight.
All right, welcome to the regular city commission meeting for February twenty-fourth, Monday at seven P M. Uh, we do not have any recognition, if everyone could join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all and all.
Very good, thank you. Roll call, please.
Whedon?
Here.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money? Swam?
Present.
And George, you have a quorum?
Thank you. I'll take a motion for the agenda, please.
I'll move. To approve the agenda.
Thank you. We have motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we will take public comments for agenda items only, please keep your comments to three minutes and state your name for the meeting. At the podium, please. Okay, seeing nobody approach the podium, I will take a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll also move.
Support.
Very good, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We have no scheduled matters from the floor, at this time, we'll do reports, uh, for departments, committees, and boards. Uh, compensation commission report. Chair Tony Hauser, uh, the city commission may choose to motion for the denial of the official documents submitted by the compensation committee, if no denial, no motion is needed for approval.
Hello, everybody, Tony Hauser, um, chair of this compensation committee. Um, so I'm here to tell you what we came up with, but I think it's good to say out loud where you guys are now, so that way we can, for everybody to hear, so. So, right now, a commissioner makes fifty dollars per meeting, then the mayor makes seventy dollars per meeting. And special meetings, they make fifteen dollars per hour, but they have to be here for an hour in order to make that fifteen dollars. So, what, after a lot of discussions and, and going through, we have decided that we were going to raise the commissioner wage to, uh, eighty dollars per meeting, and the mayor to one hundred dollars per meeting, and with the special meeting, it'll be fifty dollars the minute you walk in the door, and any hour after that first hour is twenty-five dollars per hour. So, if there's any questions based on the conversations we had or anything like that, I'll, I'll field them.
I just want the clerk, or maybe you know, Tony, how this works, we have nothing to say about this whatsoever.
So, you can deny it, you can make a motion to deny this, um, and then it just, I don't know if it goes muted at that point, and we come back to it.
It goes muted, and then it goes back to two years, so you can deny, or you can leave it as is, because they are commissioned, according to the ordinance, they have that power, but they still have to present, because you have the option to deny. It's a Home Real City Act that the city put in back in two thousand eighteen, so.
Which is the last time you guys, that, that, that anything had been assessed with you guys as well. So, and then we did in our motion state that we would come back until, uh, January of twenty-twenty-six and revisit this, maybe send you guys some goalposts.
Thank you, Tony, I appreciate it.
Good, okay.
All right.
Thank you so much, Tony, I appreciate it. Okay, at this time, uh, community development director, Richard Murphy.
Thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome, sir.
Members of the public, Rich Murphy, can we, development director, a few items for you? This evening, uh, number one, uh, is the consideration of approval to proceed with Marion County bid award and demolition of one-eleven railroad slash seven-oh-eight-south Red Bud Trail. Uh, for the benefit of, of the public, this is a, a grant that the city has been working in partnership with Marion County, uh, state land bank, uh, for the demolition. We've been working with Point Blue Consultants, uh, Shay Muller is here this evening from Point Blue. Um, and Shay has really done a nice job on this project, by the way, uh, not only developing the specs, but answering contractors' questions and getting the word out to bidders. We had a very crowded, uh, mandatory bid meeting, and we had several bids in hand, all within very tight grouping, which is always the indication of, of a well-run, uh, bid process, so hats off to Shay on that. The, uh, process from here is that we want you to, uh, approve the county's bid award, uh, the bid, recommended bid is for Melching Construction on Muskegon, Michigan. They're low bid, after, uh, kind of sharpening the pencils and doing some addition, they were low bid, and, um, they are also under our budget that we have for demolition, so it looks like we can proceed. Is, uh, on this demolition project, it's something we've been working on for a couple of years, so important milestone, very tangible kind of improvement, and sets up kind of our next step, which would be, would be to, uh, ask the market what they think should be there in an R F P process, so. That's all I had, uh, Shay's here this evening, if you have any kind of technical questions. If not, um, you know, we'd, uh, appreciate your consideration, thank you.
What's our timeframe on that, Rich? Or Shay?
Um, it'll go this spring, uh, maybe into the summer.
Okay. Very good.
Don't have any. Has, you know, obviously hasn't been officially awarded yet, but there'll, there will be, uh, you know, pre, uh, pre-project, uh, submitted, so we'll see what the schedule is, and I'm, I'm sure we'll be fine.
Very good.
Melching's, you know, a, a big company, reputable, um, I, I have firsthand experience with them, I ever saw demolition of Mercy Hospital in Baton Rouge a couple of years ago, um, same with Katie, the, the, so. Um, don't have any worries with them, and, uh, hopefully, it's, you know, an aggressive schedule.
Very good.
And now, we're ju, we're still leaving the silos, right, as part of this, we didn't, that wasn't included?
Yes.
Okay.
So, it's everything on the other side of, of railroad.
We've actually created a separate parcel where the silos live. And, uh, the rest of the, uh, parcels are going to be redevelopment.
Okay, very good. Dan, do you have something?
So, that way, we can get rid of the property without worrying about the silos. Technically?
Yeah, part of the, the grant, uh, the land bank, um, they required, because it is a light grant, that all light be taken care of on full parcels, such that, you know, it was an odd-shaped, uh, Buchanan feed mill parcel. Uh, by splitting that, we can get rid of, uh, the main feed mill, uh, holding, uh, vessels, a, as well as the, uh, the garden shop at the corner, also includes the, uh, old, old tire shop. So, uh, those, you know, after it's all said and done, it will just be, uh, you know, grassy areas, green areas, uh, still.
It also, if I may, it also anticipates the new owner purchasing the pro, proj, uh, the land, they don't have to buy the silos.
Right.
The silos, we can still deal with, but, uh, it does, it's not, uh, kind of a prerequisite for the project.
So, the, the garden shed area is under that Strifling Oil Fund insurance claim, right? Is that the?
That is correct, yeah, there, um, I guess going hand in hand with this, uh, so, you know, we are also involved with, uh, remediation of, uh, underground storage tank release from the former tire shop. That underground, uh, desal, plume groundwater plume extends on to, uh, the Buchanan feed mill, former Buchanan feed mill, uh, lot there, um, it, yeah, so, there will be a restriction for groundwater use on the feed mill, I mean, uh, soil and groundwater restriction on the tire shop, we're gonna remove as much soil as we can, actually, it's gonna be helpful once that building's down, so we can, um, the insurance company for the tire shop will take out, you know, a bunch of soil. Um, the groundwater, which is, probably much you know, it's, you know, down fifty, fifty-two feet. Um, and all, all residents within, uh, you know, like, two-year travel time are, are all on city water, so.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, shouldn't be an issue there, but it, it will, it will be attached to the, uh, the, so, yeah, so Buchanan will just be the ground for being restricted, and not the soil.
And we don't allow in sound wells anyways, so.
Right.
Why did we advertise on the county website this time and not the cities?
Uh, part of it was that the county was considered the owner, uh, just because they are, the funding mechanism went through them.
And we didn't have that the last time?
Uh, we did not, we did not actually have funding in place before the last bid, is that correct?
We had a funding path, but it was not guaranteed, in this case, they, they essentially, the county guaranteed us the funding if we continued on the state land bank grant. Uh, the requirements, would they, would be the owner, we essentially prepared all the documents, they, they were the bidding agency, if you will.
So, I mean, I wanna make this clear, though, they only own the property until we get the property tore down. They don't, they're not reclaiming the property per se. The city of Buchanan still owns the property.
The owner i, of the project, we, the city is still holding.
Okay, okay. Cause I knew that was gonna run wild.
For a second, too.
The owner of the project is still the county.
Yeah, for your guys, you're really just approving and traveling around.
Right, right.
You're approving the county to go forward with demoi, demolishing a property we own.
Right, okay.
Got it.
All right. I just wanted to make that clear for the public.
And then, no, you know, this is a great partnership with Marion County, so we wanna thank the Marion County commissioners, and, uh, Mike, my colleague at the county, uh, Katie Montoya, who was instrumental in, in their purchasing department, who opened the bids and kind of moved the process along, so, thank you to Marion County.
No, thank you so much. Okay, anything else, Dan?
No, I, that, the only other question was, we didn't get to see the bid, I mean, we seen the bids, but we didn't see the bid, so.
Right.
It's out of our hands, we're not paying, we're not paying any money out of the city of Buchanan taxes, so, we're paying it out of taxes, but not city taxes.
Right, there we go.
So, I'll move for you, your honor.
Thank you, sir. Do you have support?
I move.
I guess I'll support.
Roll call, please.
We're gonna do this first, second each time.
Uh, yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
And Bianski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, item two, uh, is a local government approval for a social district for Stranger Wine Company, two-one front street. This is a carryover from your last meeting, it's the kind of one-page resolution that gives the city the blessing on the application for the, the social district.
Okay, all right, all right. I'll take a motion.
I'll move to approve the local government approval for Stranger Wine Company, resolution twenty-twenty-five dot zero-two slash oh-seven, as presented.
Thank you, you have support?
I'll support, I do have one.
Hmm?
It's not really a question, I'm not really for this, I'm not gonna vote against it, but I'm very, as a former liquor license holder myself, this really makes me nervous as far as litigation. And I just, I mean, I know the communities are doing it, but basically, this is open container, and nobody's gonna know how this is gonna pan out until it winds up in the court, so I just wanted to make that clear. That's all.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
And Swam?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Three, I just wanted, there's a lot, lot going on in Buchanan right now, uh, I just wanted to give a couple of brief updates. Um, first of all, the residential structure at eleven-oh-seven Victory Street, at the corner of Victory and Richards, is down. So, uh, we're waiting for a clean hole inspection, and when that happens, they'll refill the hole, and as weather allows, they'll gr, uh, seed, and we'll be at, back to greenfield in the spring, so. Big milestone for that, uh, as you remember, we worked with a grant from Hunter Foundation for the, that demo, and, um, we'll look at the next priority in the, in that neighborhood for, to use those funds.
There are two more properties up there that are condemned, are them the two that we're looking at?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
Very good, thanks, Dan.
Um, tonight, uh, the plan commission approved the, uh, proposed improvements for B and W. Poor decisions at one-sixteen Main Street, uh, several improvements to, uh, the exterior upgrades, and, uh, so, I, I just wanted to give you a heads up on that, uh, they'll be doing some construction work. Right now, they have all approvals to, uh, proceed on the, all building permits, so, um, not, kind of exciting to think of, uh, the, uh, that, uh, beloved old watering hole opening up again, and, and it's kind of new generation, so, uh, exciting, uh, stuff going on on Main Street. And just two important dates to keep in mind, uh, I know one of them's on the agenda tonight, but March third, next Monday, is the downtown project meeting, be in this room at six P M, and, uh, we'll have, uh, the, all the teams, the city team, the engineering team, the construction team, so, um, we're, feel like we've gotten the word out for, very well, and we thank the local businesses for sharing these updates, especially on social media, because when we share it to our group, you share it to your customers, and we're just really filling a lot of gaps and getting some good communication out there. Also, tomorrow, uh, Wednesday, we have our pre-bid construction meeting for McCoy's Creek Trail Extension. So, this is when the engineers and contractors sit down, and then we invited everybody who lis, lives adjacent to the trail to come in, in, uh, in an open house forum, and answer, uh, any questions they may have, we went door to door with, uh, that, uh, announcement, and, um, so, another exciting, uh, project moving forward, it's been a long time coming. On that note, there's a groundbreaking s, uh, event, March tenth, at River Saint Joe Brewery, ten A M. So, uh, hoping for some good weather, and, uh, again, we're getting the, the word out to really make it a, a celebration event, so. With that, that's all I had, unless you guys had any questions.
I just wanted to make.
Lot of updates.
I'm sorry.
That was it, I was just gonna say, lot of updates.
I just wanted to make, I wasn't at the plan committee meeting tonight, gentlemen. Uh, I got my wife home from the hospital about twenty after five tonight, so. Um, she's doing well, ornery's ever, quite well sedated, so, but that's why there was no way I was gonna try to make six o'clock.
Thank you.
That's it.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you, Rich.
Thanks, guys.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Rich.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business, ordinance twenty-twenty-five dot zero-two slash four-four-zero, consider the second reading and approval of the ordinance, fire prevention and protection.
Sorry, sorry, my throat here, what we have before tonight is the second ordinance for, um, the second reading for the ordinance for the new fire prevention policy that will require inspections of properties here in the community, this is something the community's been working on for over a year now, from what I understand. Uh, we've done all the training for the firefighters, to, they'll do the inspections, everything's in place, so. Uh, with your approval on this tonight, we will be able to move forward with that program, the idea will be to start it at the beginning of the new fiscal year, that'll give us time to get all of our fee structures in place in coordination with the rental registration stuff.
Very good. Thank you, Tony. All right, if, uh, no other comments, I'll take a motion.
Anything, uh, Chief?
Any other thing, Chief, anything additional with the?
Uh, we were just here for questions, if you had any questions about it.
No, I mean, I think we've all seen the emails and communication between you and Tony, and you guys, you know, agreed on what it, the direction the ordinance was gonna go in, and I don't have any additional questions to that, I think we'll leave that up to the experts.
Yeah, I think we, I think for the public's notice, it's probably been at least four years that we've been trying to formalize this inspection process, and, like, five years? I knew it was, I knew the first proposal was presented, like, right when I got on, and then, uh, we didn't execute.
I should say, though, as we start this, it'll be businesses, we have to, we have to either create a, a, uh, you know, in addition to the ordinance, or a completely different one as we progress to rentals.
Mm-hmm.
So, it'll be getting back to where we originally started with trying to get the businesses, which we got originally with one, we did a cursory of all the businesses in town.
Yeah.
Almost six years ago, um, and of course, we had a lot of walls to, lot, lot of blocking, walls blocking us. Um, but, yeah, that'll give you the beginnings of this if this is approved, and then it'll, it'll, mm, uh, we'll modi, modify it into rentals, so, the, the plan that we had was to do inspections of all the businesses one year, and then do inspections of all rentals the following year. Um, and then just flip-flop every year, uh, but there's a lot of work up front with the rentals, and businesses, but mostly rentals with the city.
Mm-hmm.
Um, cause as you know, we have no staff, no.
Right.
Man, man's staff, so, um, but, this would be a great, great move to help make all of our businesses, all of our rentals, and the city safer.
I wanna proceed with the rentals way more than somebody that's putting some serious money into the city. I don't want the proprietors, and for lack of a better word, to feel harassed.
Right, absolutely.
After all this time.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I raised that point six years ago when this all started, you know, because I thought we had, I mean, I understand it's going forward, but I, I just wanted to, we have several slum lords in town, we have several properties that really need to be inspected, and I don't wanna harass people that's put, and I mean, it's the right word.
Right.
You know, because all it is, more regulations, more fees.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and doing things that have been the way they are for a hundred years.
Right.
So, I just wanna be very cautious in how we approach this.
What is, speaking of that, Mike, Chief, what is, what is your anticipated, like, communication ahead of time? Because I, I would imagine we're not gonna expect them to read the ordinance. We, are we going to put out something of a one-pager that, of what the expectations are, that fall within the scope of the ordinance?
Well, that's, sorry.
No, go ahead, sir.
So, that's, well, we, we had a problem when we first started originally with this, because the city didn't have a list of all of the businesses with all the addresses, we had to do a lot of legwork, jotted a lot of legwork on.
I remember that.
So, trying to, trying to get that list put together, um, and that's what, all this registration, if they register with the city, then that creates that list.
Yeah.
Right, you know, businesses and rentals, uh, so there's gonna have to be some, some legwork in the front, especially for rentals, because, uh, we've, we've got a lot of rentals in town that nobody knows about.
Right.
Right.
Don't quote me on numbers, but I can tell you.
I know there's a lot.
About eighty percent or better of the fires we've had in Buchanan in the last ten years, and then rentals that we didn't know about.
Right, I just, I'm, I'm concerned that I, are, are we going to, are we going to put something together to inform the rental?
Well, how we did it the last time.
Yes.
Which was almost six years ago, um, on the water bill, I think they mentioned it on there.
Okay.
For all the city residents, um, there was no list, I just went door to door for every business in town, close to a hundred and fifty. Introduced myself, set an appointment, this was a cursory inspection, no penalties, no fines.
Right.
Just to let them know, hey, this is a problem, this is not the code.
Yeah.
Worked with them, and went through every single business in town, then I made the report and gave it to you guys, it's over a thousand violations in the city, and we told them the next time we come, that'll be the official inspection. And, you know, we presented that to Heather, and then the next guy, and the next guy.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I guess I don't.
Yeah.
I.
But, yeah, all, all of them.
We're executing now.
Once, and were given notes, the codes, the violations, everything that they needed to fix, and, you know, now it's been three, four years.
Right.
That caught, caught in COVID during the middle of it.
Yeah.
Um, so they all know if there was a problem, but a lot of businesses have changed, a lot of ownerships, uh, a whole bunch of new businesses, a lot of marijuana places came in. So, there's a lot of places that have not had inspection.
Okay, so I, I guess my, to my point, can we establish some forward communication, I don't know how much more to say this. Can we at least put, find out who they are, send a letter? I appreciate you going door to door, but I think that if they have a formal letter from the city staff, and indicating from them, from the chief, and these are, this is the process we're gonna follow, just, I, I, to your point, I don't want you to show up and then be unaware of what is this ordinance is, because honestly, most people aren't gonna find out what it is until you show up, and I don't want that, I'd rather have communication coming.
I had a business list.
Yeah.
Which I, I made a business list when I did it last.
Okay.
Every owner of the building, the occupants of the building, if there was a tenant of the building, and got all their names, information, and I turned that over to the city. Cause there wasn't, the only thing we had to work off of was a boil order.
Yeah.
And that boil order didn't cover hardly anybody.
Okay.
So, that was given to gainers at the time.
Right.
Um, so the city has that list, I'm sure I've still got the list, but again, a lot of those businesses have changed, I, I don't know who the owners are now.
Yeah.
There's at least addresses for the business.
Okay, I mean, it just sounds like it's me a little work ahead of time, that's all.
Oh, yeah, it's not gonna start tomorrow.
Right, absolutely.
But, well, it's not like we just show up, we, these are by appointment.
Okay.
Make contact with the owner, set up a date, you know, and then if, if there is issues, then we, you know, then he absolutely has to come back at a certain amount of time after.
I guess I'm looking at it from the same perspective, Chief, is.
I think they're trying to figure out a lot of it still.
Yeah, to your point, the reason we're gonna wait till the beginning of the fiscal years.
Right.
We have that four-month rap, ramp up to get out a campaign of, here's what's coming, even if we have the who has had what before, send that to them in advance.
Right.
So, we can say, hey, yeah, so that's why we're not gonna start tomorrow, to the chief's standpoint, we're gonna take these four months to get everybody knowing what's coming.
Right, I'm looking at it from the same perspective that we did with the water, when you, when they needed to have inspections, and they had a Q R code and everything, you know, there's, I'm looking for this similar cadence, because I think it really demystifies what anticipation is for all consumers, and then it keeps the book of faces under control, so.
And I'm sure we got a short list of complaints from various, either renters, or police, or neighbors.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a way they could.
And that's where I'd really like to start, cause that's where the problem is.
I agree.
To begin with, and you can get your feet wet, and I mean, you're not gonna get staff, we don't have the money, it's that simple. You know, ask Peter, Peter Oil.
Sign of Peter up.
Give it to Mikey, Mikey.
Peter's like, yeah.
I guess I'm, geez, Dan, we're not asking for staff.
No, I, that's not what I was saying.
And I have to ask you a question, since I'm a lot sensitive for talking, why would you consider it harassment?
Because that's the best word I could use.
That, so you're openly saying to the public that we're gonna go harass people?
No.
No.
That's what you're saying?
No. If you wanna get into a match here, we can do that by.
No, no, we don't wanna do that.
I know, but I'm asking him, and I'm telling him, that's not what I meant, and I made it very clear. It's the easiest word to lo, use, because the thing about it is, when it first started six years ago, that's basically what it came across as. Now, you can interpret it whatever way you want to, but I am entitled to my opinion, and everybody's gonna interpret it the way they want to interpret that.
I would agree, and I think.
I'm not gonna soft-soap it.
Right.
I'm not gonna backpedal it.
I don't disagree with you, and I think that was my whole intention, and this has gone on a lot longer than I anticipated, and we can all just calm down right now, I promise you that. Number one, my whole reason for communication that goes out to these business owners and residents on a piece of paper is to avoid this communication issue. Mike, I agree with you that, if you, you under, you heard it one way, what he said and what you heard, and what he said and what I heard were two different things. All I'm saying is, I wanna ensure that we are communicating at, to every capacity, to ensure that they don't under, they completely understand what's coming towards them. That's all, that, that, and I think you guys are just in what you're doing, I think he's just in what he's saying, I think we move on. So, are we good?
Yeah, I'm fine.
I figured you were.
I just don't hand out trophies.
So, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll move to approve the second reading of the approval of ordinance twenty-twenty-five dot zero-two slash four-four-zero, as presented.
Very good, do you have support?
I'll support.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
And Swam?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good, thank you. All right, moving on to new business, Parks Grant two thousand twenty-five discussion, Tony?
This is an opportunity for you guys to look at some of our future opportunities. This is an opportunity for you guys to look at some of our future opportunities here. Uh, we've got a couple parks projects we've been actively talking about in the community, one being Catherine Park, doing some new playground equipment there and parking areas. The second one being the Riverfront, where we've gotten two grants the last few years, had some great interest in that, doing bathrooms in a pavilion down there to support the amenities down there. If we were to go for the Riverfront Park, and we go for both to be clear, but it's a matter of what you wanna commit to match wise. Uh, the Riverfront Park, we would apply for, through the DNR Trust Fund Program, which we've used before with some good success down there. The Catherine Park project, we'd probably go with the Land Water Conservation Fund with the DNR, uh, they are better for those kind of projects than the Trust Fund. The match for both projects, what you'd be committing to would be the twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year. For each project, you're gonna be looking at about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in match at this point in time. We can figure that out in the next month as we do some planning on it, but we wanna get your temperature first. So you keep that in the area, you'd wanna be in match wise for the projects each to make them competitive. The only other thing with the Land Water Conservation for Catherine Park, and nothing needs your approval, but we'd have to spend about two thousand dollars for the archaeologist to do the initial shippo thing to go in with that grant application. The reason why is the state of Michigan with their Land Water Conservation Fund money that comes from the federal government, they're always on the end of allocating it to when it's gonna expire, so they have you do some of that upfront kind of pre-development stuff like the archaeologist to make sure you're gonna be okay when your grant goes in. So tonight is not a decision, it's really get your guys' temperature on the two park projects, Catherine Park and the Riverfront. Knowing you're gonna be committing to a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in match for each project and the little bit of upfront money, just to see, do you wanna go for one, do you wanna go for both? Wanna get what your feelings are, because we're gonna have to come back for you guys for resolutions both, on one or both, at your last March meeting. So this gives us some direction between now and the end of March to pursue and develop one or two applications to come back for your final approval.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, from, I guess I'll start the discussion on this, you know, two years in a row, we've slated that we were gonna do something in Catherine Park. We do have, I wanna say roughly a hundred and twenty-five thousand in the capital account for the, for parks in general. Not that we need to bleed it dry by any means, but get a strategy, um, to go along with some of those funds is where my head's at. I'd really lean to you on if we could afford to do both, but if I had to make a preference, I would say the commission's met twice on budget discussions and planning on Catherine Park already and that's where my head's at.
Yeah, I meant the same, I think the Barb has been putting an effort in, uh, with the same company that turns out and we've had that communication and I appreciate that and I think that triple A, triple A State of Play, if that's who we go with, I'm not sure where they're at on that, but um, it's gonna be exceptional, I'd rather focus on that. I think the community spoke when they did that survey years ago, that that would be our next. We, we did a great job at Victory Park, so I think the next one is Catherine. And I think we go into twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight for the next one for down there.
What's the possibility of doing both?
Um, give me a couple weeks, get my answer on our budget moving forward and let the treasurer throw some things at me, but given that we can push these off to our twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year, which would give us really two budget years to plan for it and set some money aside, I, I'm very viable to do both and get both grant applications together.
I think from an attraction point of view, the river would probably be way up there. I mean, I know the locals want playground equipment, I mean, and we can transfer the playground equipment out to the ballpark. We've got a ballpark that's gonna want money too, but you know, the River Park has always been, I mean, we've got so many good parks in this town. I mean, they're beautiful parks and I mean, I have some reservations about restrooms out there, cause I just relate to my sixteen-year-old attitude pretty easily. So I mean, you know, and that would be something we'd have to talk to Harvey or, you know, just a outhouse type design, if that's even feasible. But the, the river, I mean, the Catherine Park, you just don't see people in them, you know, and I just think the attraction would be stronger down. And I mean, that's my opinion again, but I mean, I live on Fourth Street, so I'm down there a fair amount. And there's not that many people at the River Park either, for that matter. But for, uh, an attraction for the city, I would, you know, and I, I, I really wanna include Barb way more. You know, make your decision at Barb and then come to us, Tony, so that we don't have to, you know, and I mean, the five-year plan, Catherine Park was there. Catherine Park was ahead of the pavilion, Catherine Park was ahead of everything, and then that just fell by the wayside. We used up all our cash, which, you know, is another question.
Mike, isn't, sorry, I thought you were done. Yeah. Mike, what, it's, it's been locked as long as I can remember, what's the, isn't there a bathroom on Richard Street at the top of the hill there? What's the reason that's never, that's what the rumor is, I've always, I've always heard, what, is it in good shape? I mean, what's the reason for that?
Probably seventeen or eighteen years ago, we cleaned it, had it all ready to go and they'll never open it. I'm sure it needs some updating because it's been, I don't know how long it's been there.
It's probably pristine in there.
Twenty-two years, so it's been locked for that long.
Maybe worth looking into, maybe it's worth opening that asset up in the short term, so.
Actually, I'm always.
I've never, I've never been in it either, so I've always wondered.
Mike and I are gonna go exploring the suite.
The last thing we had there was a, a homeless fellow living in the doorways there, using them as an outhouse himself.
Yeah, I know Harvey and the team have had some, to deal with some homelessness down at that park and over the years, so. It's a ongoing issue.
That's not even really a park, I mean, for all intents and purposes, that's not, that's not the River Park, you know.
Actually, that is considered Riverfront Park.
It, it is.
That park is actually considered.
Yeah, it's registered park in the city.
There used to be, there used to be a, a dock that went down, or a, a walkway that went all the way down to the river and people went down there and fished. We tore it out, the DNR made us tear it out fifteen, sixteen years ago or something, somewhere in there.
That's why them restrooms were built there at the top of the hill?
Yes, but they were never open, people used it to fish, they would go down there, it was right below the dams, they would go right down there to the dam and fish right there. We actually had two places, one was up off of Elizabeth Street, uh, the AAP Park, and they closed that one down, we tore out a bunch of steps and stuff.
Yeah.
Down there and, uh, outhouse down there, and then they had that one and we tore out the walkway that went down there.
I knew about the AAP, but I, I, I wondered why there was a toilet in the middle of nowhere.
That was actually, it was considered.
So, thank you, this is great, guys. So what I'm hearing from this, where we're gonna go is, we're working with Barb on this, we wanna start with you because we're gonna be asking for money. So I wanna kinda give you the things, what I'm hearing is, if we feel we can make both work in the budget, let's get both in play and just ride them until we have to make a hardcore decision on both of them, according with Barb and look for some at your last meeting in March for match commitments on these, so.
Sounds good.
Perfect, thanks, guys.
And I mean, the thing about it is, is we have never approached the marijuana people at all, and I mean, it's kinda late in the game. But I mean, that's a revenue source, it's not your mom and pops that run a business by yourself, I mean, these are national conglomerates. And I think it's a great way to get some money for our parks.
All right. Very good, thank you. All right, item B, uh, Bzinski, I, I'm sure I butchered that, uh, and company, consider engagement letter?
You did better than most on that. I'm not sure our consultant knows how to pronounce it yet. Uh, so anyway, Andy, as you know, came to us last month, kinda presented everything, our last mission, I mean, I apologize. Uh, what this is, is the, uh, letter of engagement for them to walk us through the next bond process that we need to do to complete the financing package for the downtown project. Um, by your approval of this tonight, this will engage them to be able to, um, get going with our bond council, start reaching out to market, structuring things. Um, one of the biggest things we wanna do is we know is try to get a five-year call on it, we know seven's doable. Five's ideal right now on this market, so we get that, so we wanna Andy, get Andy, um, getting on those right now. So, uh, with your approval on this tonight, we get Andy signed, engaged, and working on that bond for the downtown project.
Very good. All right, gonna take a motion on that?
I'll move to approve the engagement letter from Ben Zitski and Company as presented. I'm a Polack and I still can't say that.
Did it better than I did. I'll support. All right, thank you, roll call, please.
Vianzki.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
And Weeden.
Yes.
Here's you.
Thank you.
Actually, I'm Ukrainian.
Oh my gosh. Okay, uh, moving on to item C, expenditures, consider approving expenditures for February twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, ten dollars and twenty-seven cents.
There was only one thing on there, um, we're spending four hundred dollars for our urine test. When I looked that up, somebody's gouging us pretty good.
But we'll reach out to different providers in the area and see what we're paying compared dollars and report back to y'all.
Yeah, it's like fifty percent.
Right, I saw that too, thanks.
So, um, I'll move to approve, well, the amount, it's not on here.
Thirty-nine.
I'll move to approve the amount of thirty-nine thousand, ten dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Thank you, do you have support? Support, thank you, roll call, please.
Swam?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
And Vianzki.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, moving on to communications, save the date, Buchanan Downtown Project update on March third at six PM in the Buchanan City Hall. Everything you need to know about the Buchanan Downtown Project, project scope and timeline, communication strategy, Q and A session. Uh, the city time and engineers, contractors, sorry, city team, engineers, contractors will be present, this is a public meeting. Downtown residents and businesses are especially encouraged to attend.
I think everybody's pretty, um, informed on when it is and where it is up to this point.
Yeah.
I think every one of us have reached out, uh, and shared it, so.
Okay.
When we get done with this project, nobody's gonna say they weren't reached out to.
Yeah, I would imagine.
They will though.
Okay, at this time, we'll have public comments for non-agenda items, please keep your comments to three minutes and approach the podium, state your name for the record. Mr. Randy?
Hey guys, Randy Hendrickson, um, building three two four, um, I wasn't going to make a comment, but since it came up tonight, I haven't had a chance to walk my property with Tony. Um, but I have officially, um, since we talked about parks tonight and bathrooms, um, I have officially, um, offered a structure on my property, uh, to the city to build out, uh, community restrooms to, um, Memorial Park, Memorial Park's currently the busiest park, um, in our community. Um, the structure is available, I'm willing to pay utilities on it, um, the city would have to build it out and then also maintain, um, toiletries in there, but I just wanted to go on record and, and put that, that that's been offered to the city.
Very good, thank you, Randy, I appreciate that.
Hi, Mike Zimmerman, I live in town, uh, I wanna make some suggestions down the River Park, since we were talking about it, there's a lot of dead limbs up in those trees. And even over the path that goes down to the creek, and I was wanting to bring that to the city's attention. Since I used to work for you guys before and we'd done some tree work and, so I know they got the stuff to do with.
Very good. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike. Okay, seeing no further public comments, city manager comments?
Uh, just a couple of updates for you guys on a few things, uh, there's been a lot of activity on social media about the area by, on Red Bud here, by Big B Coffee, uh, Sinkhole Farming. That's actually been an existing issue for four plus years, Mike and I talked about this last week. It tends to fluctuate and show more when the, um, freestyle is going on like we're seeing. The intent's always been to address as part of the downtown project, just has taken a while for downtown project going. We're actually meeting with the engineering team tomorrow to scope out a couple fixes for that, to work in, because we have quantity prices on everything that we're gonna need for that for the downtown project with good quantity prices, the volume we're buying right now, so we're working on that, give us a week or two to come up with a couple options and costs and we'll be coming back to you on that one. Just want you to know we're active, we're working on that and we're meeting on it tomorrow, just like notes on, on social media.
Awesome, okay.
There's that on that, um, going back to Commissioner Vianzki's question on rental registration, you'll be seeing that next week at your meeting then. Uh, reason we led with fires is because fire was written and ready to go, we've written rental now, that's gonna be ready to go and coming for you in February. Same idea, let's put it in place, four months of notice, it's coming, first of our fiscal year, it all goes into place, you'll be seeing that at your next meeting. Just some updates on the downtown project, you see all the trees all went down today, are mostly down today, so that's been taken care of. Um, Mike and his crew got the string lights down, Mike, thank you for all that, that's great. Um, the detour signage, it's everywhere, we're playing with it, where it's located and all that. This is very typical, when we start a project like this, you have an idea what the detour is gonna look like and then people use it and you figure out, hey, we need to change this here and this here. Uh, including by moccasins school, if you picked up your kid this afternoon, you're shaking your head. Um, engineers are already on that because the way they queue up for picking up the kids and the detours causing some problems, so we'll, we're looking at that tomorrow as well. So since you're talking to people, we're aware, we're working on it, it's being taken care of. Ten shop theater, that bit'll be going out Wednesday for the roof repair there, just so you know there. Um, during the snowstorm this last, uh, week, we actually had the loader break down, the actuator on the turbo. Um, that's why some things were slowed down for operations during that few days there, that's been fixed, thank God it wasn't the full turbo itself. So it's about half the price, so that's up and running again now, so at the later half of the storms, we had that going. You will see, you'll see an emergency bill for that at one of your future meetings here, next couple meetings. We got the paperwork today, DPW Building, closeout paperwork, not totally, totally final yet, but we didn't burn through all the contingencies, so there's gonna be a little bit of money there, somewhere around thirty thousand dollars left from the contingency that we did not spend, they're working through the final paperwork on that now, so that'll be coming before you here pretty soon. And then, uh, stained glass windows, just that's been an ongoing issue here in the cemetery. Um, I've reached out and found a couple people who do that sort of work, we're gonna put on RFP to see where that cost comes in at and address that before we lose that window. So, just some things we're working on right now and new pee test, working on that as well.
Very good.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vianzki?
Well, you answered my questions about the street closers, cause I was, you know, they're gonna decide like, is Oak Street gonna be closed, you know? Is that the way they're gonna close it?
Uh, right now, Oak is not gonna be closed going towards the community center.
Okay.
I have to check my map going the other way, if that's one of the closes.
Okay, so you can go south and not north.
It will have some temporary at times, but I don't know when that's gonna be.
Okay, um, and then Mike, is our furnace working?
Boiler?
Yeah.
Uh, yes and no. We started a fire in it when we first started it, haven't had an issue with it in the last week, it's burned out three times. We cannot figure out what's going on, why it's going on, um, it was out this morning when we came in, full of logs, out. So we built a fire in it, it's still going, I just checked it on my way in, um, so I, I don't know what's going on. There's something, communication is not happening with the inside of the building at this point, but it has been working extremely well up till the last week or so.
So what kind of smoke does it put out? Any?
When it's burning efficiently, hardly any at all. When we load, when we first load it, it does give off some smoke because we obviously have killed the flame and burned it with wood.
Right. Right.
But when it's running, you don't even know, that fan kicks up and runs and you have no idea it's even putting out smoke.
All right, very cool. So you're in touch with the guy that put it in or the furnace people to get it fixed?
Been in touch with, uh, RW La Pine, who did our install for us and the log boiler people. And really, it's the log boiler people that we have got to get the communication down with, but we're playing phone tag and, uh, he's reading the manual type of thing right now, so.
I highly recommend getting a hold of Niles, they've, I've had one for nine.
I've talked to all Ray ten times.
Okay, good, thank you, because I mean, I spoke their language, you know, and there's all kinds of tweaks, especially with it being brand new and a new situation, cause it does have to all line up.
Yep.
My son-in-law's got one and I mean, you gotta get, it's kinda like getting that exhaust for your new furnace lined up going outside the house. If it's not perfect, it ain't gonna work.
Right.
So.
Nope, we are aware, it's, it's something to do with our stack temperature, we have to find the sweet spot in that. Um, and we, we, at this point, we are, I don't know what's going on, why it's not messing up, I don't know if it's communication loss at this point or what, but there's a lot, this new age technology stuff with all this computerized, you can't go and touch a thermostat on the wall thing is out there, man.
You have it figured out by next winter though.
Uh, yeah, well, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, I'm really, you know, I was excited about getting that, cause they wanted to stop it and when I started finding out about the numbers, that's massive.
Well, you're not the only one, I pushed for it hard and there's reasons, I mean, it works when it works, so we just gotta get it dialed in.
Okay.
We knew there was gonna be bumps in the road, so we're working through it.
Good.
Yeah, just, I guess that's it, I'll stop.
You gotta get home, right?
I got a thousand things, yeah, I got a thousand things going on.
All right, man, no worries. No, I understand. Mr. Swam?
Ah, excited, thank you to all that were involved in getting the feed mill project to where it is, it's gonna be exciting to get that eyesore torn down. One day we'll get those silos taken out, who knows when, but, uh, at least we're making progress there, so that's a big deal, so thank you, everybody that put effort into that. Tony addressed the moccasin question already, so I don't have to answer that. I'm highly confident in what the fire team is gonna put together on enforcement this, so there's no, no concerns out of that here. Um, one thing I, I think I would like to see out of it, just a recommendation, don't just take it for what it's worth, but versus doing alternating years, I would rather see the, the people that are following the rules get a two-year window to, before the next inspection and those habitual offenders, they're on the list every year, um, and, and we're hitting them and looking at them and not giving them a pass for a year just cause they had it, is all. So, other than that, I'm confident you guys are gonna do a great job with that and I think it's.
So other than that, I'm confident you guys are gonna do a great job with that and I think it's gonna make a big impact for the community, so that's all I have.
Very good. I don't have anything additional. I think you guys have covered every topic I wanted to cover, so I thank you, everybody who came this evening. And, and please, uh, contact the city with any questions that you hear, uh, out there on the street about issues with the detours and signage and really anything. I think it's really helpful to keep everybody informed and they can put communication out on the city page, so. Uh, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Also move.
Support. Roll call, please.
Swam?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
And Vianzki. Your adjourn?
Thank you.
All right, that's a good one.
Yeah.
Hold on, not quite a high power.
Yeah, I tried, I tried. I didn't think that.
How you doing, Brandon?
I didn't think that, uh, some of the ones that were gonna be longer, were gonna be longer than I thought.
Breathing, like there's a four needle.